Good evening and welcome to the January 5th, 2023 Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission Meeting. I will now call the meeting to order. Mike will open in prayer and Tim will follow with a pledge, so if you'll please stand.
Last break. Definitely follow Lord, we just thank you for this, another beautiful day you've given us. Father God, just thank you for the opportunity to be a part of furthering our town. Father God, just continue to watch over us, lead, guide, and direct us in all we do in our meeting here tonight. Father God, just continue to watch over our town and to lead it in the direction you have it to go. Father, we love you and we thank you for all the blessings that you give us each day. Father, just continue to guide us in the direction we should go. Father, we love you and we thank you. In Christ's name, amen.
We face the flag. I place allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Tim. Citizens comments. We are now on to the approval of the minutes of the December 1st, 2022 meeting. Counselor of the meeting agenda minutes in order.
Your orders are formed here.
Okay. Commission, I think we've all had a chance to review and are there any corrections? And if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Who to approve the minutes?
I have a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. We are now on to old business. The first agenda item has been deferred.
They did request the referral. We do need to get a motion to defer, yes.
Okay. Is staff good with the referral?
Yes.
Deferral?
Deferral, yes.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
Make a motion to defer.
I have a motion to defer. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to defer. Any further discussions? All in favor of deferring this agenda item signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This item has been deferred. We are now on to our second request under old business. This is a rezoning request from Chandler Walker, 102 Williamsonport Drive, rezoning R3 to PRD. Kevin.
Yes, this is a request that you all, you looked at it last month and you did defer it until tonight. This is a request, property is a 42.87 acres, currently zoned R3, has been requested to be rezoned to a PRD. The request of PRD is for 44 single-family lots with 54 townhomes. Property, all the surrounding property is zoned R3. Our land use plan would support medium-density, single-family residential development in this area. As far as the major thoroughfare plan, there's nothing really affected by the, with this development. It's not affecting really anything on the thoroughfare plan. It would connect both sides of Williamsonport Drive together, as well as extend Bonifay Drive and High Ridge Drive, which are, those are all local streets. We did have a couple other comments which were primarily informational for the developer, as well as the planning commission. There's some pretty significant topographic changes on this property and so sprinkler systems may be required based on fire flow, as well as the total square footage of the proposed residences under roof. And also, just again, for their information, the maximum slope is 10% for public roadways, as well as a private easement, which would access, there's two proposed lots which would be accessed via a private easement, and that would also have to meet that maximum slope requirement, just for the purposes of the fire department being able to access the property if needed. So, again, you all did look at this last month. You did defer it for a neighborhood meeting to take place, and it's my understanding that that did happen. And so, now it is back on your agenda. It's essentially unchanged, other than the townhomes that you were in the packet last month were three-story townhomes, and they are now two-story townhomes. So that is one change that has been made, based on, since you looked at it last time, so.
Okay.
And that's what I have.
Okay. We'll start for any questions that we may have for Kevin or staff concerning this.
Tim?
Okay, Catherine. So Kevin, we are still at 44 single-family and 54 towns in this.
Correct.
Is someone representing the developer here tonight? If you'll come up, give us your name and address.
Caleb Spearing in 103 Maple Street in Smyrna.
Okay.
This is.
Andrew Lozeman, 316 Maury Court, Franklin, Tennessee.
Okay. Can you just walk us through what, what changes that you've proposed?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for allowing us to defer and to get to have that community meeting. We had a spirited conversation in Red Bicycle the Thursday following it, and essentially, we left that meeting with three major requests. One was that we would lower the height of the townhomes to provide more privacy for the surrounding people at the townhomes back up to. I guess it's four, and then the third, second is that we changed the facade and the look of the townhomes to fit more in with the surrounding areas, so that it would kind of go in more with the community. The third was that we removed a connection road between Bonifay and Williamsonport and replaced that with more walking trails and stuff. That was another request of the community. And the fourth was that I shaved my beard, and we, as you see, we're coming up with four of four of those. So, the pictures of the town.
Do we have a site plan that we want to show the change in the connection? So, realistic, I think one of the major concerns is having the Col Street access between Williamsonport and Bonifay was one of the things, so we were able to eliminate that and just provide an extension of the walking trail to meet both sides of that. So we chose not to add additional lots there. They still, only the same number of lots where we could have added up two more of the single-family lots, it's still open space.
Right, and then dropping the height, obviously, was for, there are a lot of privacy concerns in here, right here, and we obviously were three-story townhomes, and so we dropped them down to two-story, and again, changed. Do you have a picture of the aesthetics?
Not on the PowerPoint. They have it on their desk.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
So they were looking, they were a little more modern in the last renderings that were provided, and now they're more of a traditional bungalow-style feel to that community, to make it blend with what's existing there today. As far as the buffering, I think our intent would still be the same. We have left 20-foot strip there on that property line for that intent, so that we could establish a good landscape buffer to help screen that extra traffic from that driveway that runs around. So.
Which means fifty?
Fifty feet?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's 50 feet now, which is a much more extreme buffer, and would provide that dense wood feel, once the landscaping gets established.
Caleb, I think I asked this the first time, so I'm going to ask it again. So, the surrounding zoning is R3, and it's been R3 for quite some time. Why not bring to us an R3 development?
Yeah. Tim, can I?
Yeah, let me, I appreciate the applause, but look, we want to keep this professional, and I would just ask everyone to kind of refrain while we have a discussion here.
Tim, can I defer? He's going to be able to speak a lot more direct, and I might be onwind.
Yeah, I'm just looking for an answer.
Yeah, so, so the intent here is, is that the property is set undeveloped, like we discussed last time, largely in part because of the topography challenges on this site. So to bring you an R3 development, it, there's no, the cost benefit of having, adding the townhomes into this development allows for us to provide the infrastructure, the Williamsonport Drive, the Bonifay Drive connections. All those connections cost the developer money, whereas if we were only to come in here with a much smaller, you know, single-family development, it would present a challenge where it's just going to sit blank. And, and I don't think it's always going to be that way, but at the end of the day, we have to bring something to y'all, and this was our best request for that, to meet those different challenges between the topography and, and the uses and the number of lots that we feel like we could get if we just went with an R3.
So are you saying it would be too expensive for development if it were to stay in R3 for you?
I would say that the pros and cons of it, realistically, it would take a lot longer to develop. That construction traffic would be a lot longer to move through that. It would take us longer to develop it as an R3 lot. We feel like we can get the same number of units on this lot, as we're showing today. It's just a matter of, you know, making sure we're having the least amount of impact on the development. We think we can be out of here in two to three years, as opposed to six to eight, with doing a, trying to phase in a development.
Do you have, Kevin, were we able to give them the pros and cons that we created?
I've seen your pros and cons.
Okay.
I'm aware of it.
We can hand them out if we need to.
Yeah, you can pass them out to the other members.
So I think, I think the challenge with the topography only just adds time and construction, length of construction to this aspect.
And takes away from green space and benefits of HOA and PRD standards and.
Yeah, and so we're adding a lot more amenity space with this. We're keeping a lot more of the area in the rear of the property open, just because of, if we were to develop as an R3, to get that density that we're looking for, we would be wiping out that whole open area on the north side of the property, where right now, it's going to be two lots with the state lots.
I was going to, I was going to say, due to the topography, how much of that could realistically be developed where you're showing the two larger lots?
I can, the way that I have laid it out, this continuation of this road that I'm already showing, this driveway would shift, meander, probably 40 feet this way, and then I can meet property standards all the way up to a cul-de-sac on that very tip. So there would be critical lots out here on this outside edge, but there would be around the bow, all the way on that side.
What type of grade are we looking at to do that?
Do you have the sheet C 3.0 in front of me?
Yep, I can have it in front of me. 3.0?
3.0. So you can see that there's a ridge line that exists today along the knoll, all the way out to the crest of the, almost to the property line, realistically. And so the idea would be that we would shave off a portion of that and push it off to the east portion of the property, and develop a flat area for additional lots. And so we would carry that all the way out to where, and if you don't mind me approaching that.
Yeah, you can approach.
Don't want to get too close, so you can see this ridge line as it comes out. We can keep this at 10% all the way out to the edge, and then use some of the field that we're cutting along this ridge line to expand our cul-de-sac out to here. And so all of this could be lots around this corner, and all of this could be lots around this corner.
And then here?
This would still remain.
It's too steep.
This would still remain open space, but it would still provide larger lots, but these lot, the lot continuation would still be 75, 70-foot line lots all the way out to the.
Okay.
So it's, it's trying to, it's trying to respect some of the existing open space that is on this property, while still providing the density that makes it work for development.
Okay.
And Tim, the whole goal, sir, was to provide a much nicer, higher-scale product on these single families, as well as the townhomes. And if we end up having to go that single-family route, obviously, density requires us to shrink those lots down to the minimum-size lots, whereas we have some 15,000, we have a nine-acre track, a three-acre track, and if we end up having to go that single-family, in order to get that density, among all the other cons that Andrew has said, those lots will just shrink, which decreases the house size that we can put on there, decreases the cost that we can sell them for, all of it.
But wouldn't it keep it similar with everything around it? Because the lot sizes can't shrink any smaller than what's there. It's R3.
Than the 10,000, yeah.
Right? So I get where you're coming from, and I tell you where, I've thought about this and thought about this, and I tell you where my biggest concern is. And when we do new developments out in this, somewhere, anywhere, you name a place, where it's not established all around it, there's the rub for me. It's just kind of like, we're trying to stick a square peg in a round hole here. And I think just, I'm speaking for myself, because I'd love to see you develop. I know your product, and I know it's great product. But what I'd like to see is an R3 development versus a PRD that brings this density into one pocket of that development, if it can be spread out as an R3, and even potentially use some of that townhome designated space as added green space. Now you're giving buffers to those people. You're giving privacy to those people who are concerned about backing up to it, even though, even though you dropped it from a three to a two.
They actually would have less buffer, but.
Well, if it's green space, it's not.
We're going to have to.
I'm just saying hypothetically, stay with me here. If you, if you roll all the way up that hill and do R3 like you just showed us on that ridge, and pick up lots there, I mean, if you can put singles down there, great, but if you cannot, it does permit an opportunity to have some green space, or for whatever reasons.
We would have to put single-family down there, and they would go all the way up, the lots would go all the way up to the boundary, and they'd be 10,000.
But they're doing that now with density, you say, except for, except for up on the ridge.
Correct, but the goal for bringing this to us was to put in one, a higher end product, more privacy, less intrusive to the neighbors. We have to bring construction traffic in there.
But what I'm hearing, Caleb, here's what I'm hearing. There's going to be some higher-end product in there, yes, but the trade-out for it is to get the non-R3 product in there as well. And so I think consistency here is where I'm going. It's like, like I said, if we go out here and we, we approve a development somewhere, there's nothing around it yet. It's farmland, or it hasn't grown out. That's one thing, because now, anybody that were to buy and could potentially move in around it knows it's there. But when you have something that's in the middle of a well-established subdivision, I can see why there's concern. If it were my home, I'd probably be sitting out there going, that's my concern too, you see? And that's kind of where I'm coming from. We can get an R3 development in here, I think it makes everybody happy, because they know, they know it's going to develop into residential housing, much like what they currently live in. That, and I think that's where the differences have been, you know? So if you can make an R3 work, everybody's happy, you know?
And I think, you know, there's something to be said for that, and I appreciate that feedback. However, with us knowing about construction and what it takes to build this, the reason we brought this one, yes, because there is more money to be made with this density. But there's also, a large part of it is privacy and impact that we're going to have much stronger, and we feel that, what we know that's going to have to, and this is what, this is what got a lot of people on our side when we were doing the community meeting, because we left there with several people, we would prefer to have a PRD, because of the impact, because of the product that they're going to guarantee to get from this, because of the value that they're going to sell for. And that is, when we look ahead and we see this, could we go in and do an R3, potentially, but when we look at it this way, we say, less impact, less time, more privacy, higher-end product, and we leave a lot more green space, higher amenities.
I don't disagree with any of it. I don't.
Yeah, and that's ultimately, it's up to y'all to decide that.
I actually get that, but, but.
Yes, but.
But we've got several hundred neighbors that have lived there for a long time, and they may not get that. They just want to keep it the way it is. And so, that's kind of where I've been thinking about it, you know? I mean, I get that this is a good-looking development. I promise you, I do. It's what I do for a living. I understand good-looking developments. But in this situation, wrapped by R3 all the way around it, and sticking it right in the middle, if the residents there don't perceive that as being a good fit for that subdivision, I kind of have to think I agree with them, you know?
Some don't.
So that's where I'm at, I guess. That's where I'm at. That's, I just wanted you to know, because I know you and I have talked a little bit about other stuff in town, but this is kind of where I come from on this.
Sure.
And I'll tell you something. You keep talking about a higher-end product with this versus an R3. What would be the difference in your mind, as far as the homes not being of the same higher-end product, if it were an R3?
Sure.
Smaller?
Sure. So when we, when someone enters in, when I enter into a development and say, if I'm going to buy a house here, I'm looking at amenities, I'm looking at green space, I'm looking at lot size, and that is going to dictate a little bit about what I'm going to be willing to spend in that development. All of those things are going away. So that house now is going to go for a less, lesser price, meaning that the house that we have to put on that, we have to be able to build for a lesser price, meaning that might entail vinyl, that might entail some brick, some vinyl, some, you know, and we have to cut our costs in order to build a house here, in order to build a house here that's going to sell at a budget that is affordable for a neighborhood with such small lots, and things like that.
So what you're saying is, for you to go forward with a single-family, you're not going to build a predominantly all-brick home, which is, is currently there in a large part of this?
I would say that's pretty accurate.
Well, I will add, not everybody in that subdivision has all-brick homes, so it's just not.
There's a property, as you be, like you said, you're in this, in this industry, there's a property value thing to think of, too, is if you're running comps, you're comparing it to comparables that are, so you're not going to necessarily compare it to a townhome if you're selling a single-family home. So.
I'm going to catch you right there, because like I told you, I agree that it's, it's a good development, but I also.
Everyone else, though.
Well, but I'm trying to be sensitive to the people that have lived there for an awful long time, and don't necessarily want to see it change. Now, if that means you have to go in there and do a brick front, three vinyl sides, or whatever, that may be, because R3 allows that. PRD gives us, only gives us control.
Right.
But with R3, you get to go in there and build what you want, and I think, I think we explained that pretty well in the last meeting.
Correct.
And that's the risk that they, oftentimes, I'll say this, be careful what you wish for, because sometimes it doesn't work out.
Right.
But I think I know you well enough to know, you're going to go up there and try to do a quality product that you can sell, regardless if it's this or if it's single-family, because that's your name. It's putting your name on it.
Right. And Mr. Atkins, I agree with you. All of that, I agree with you.
We're agreeing a lot.
Back to the, yeah, back to the property value thing. If I go in there and I build a $3.5 million product in there, doing it a PRD way, every single, and this is where, this is what one majority of the people in to this, to be able to, to want to do a PRD instead of this R3, was that $750,000 comp is going to look a lot better with, when they're trying to sell their house, or get their house reappraised, than a $400, $500,000 house. That, there's, there's value to that. And that's where, Mr., Tim, you brought up that, you asked that size of the house and the quality of product, and what we're going to put in there, and this is all just to answer your question.
I guess for me personally, I feel there's an element of, if, if I don't get this, I'm not going to build the same thing that's, that's consistent with this neighborhood. It may take it a step back, and that's, that concerns me. It's, it's almost, we're going to, either we do this, or I'm going to do it my way.
And he can.
Yeah, and he can, but it feels almost like we're saying, I'm going to, here you go, look at this, this is what I'm going to do to you now. And it just doesn't seem consistent with the person that I know, with you.
And I, I don't want to, I don't want to speak for him, but he didn't get into this business not to make money. And so there's real choices that he has to make with the property that he has, right? And so I don't think, I don't think he's trying to say that he's going to go in here and put vinyl-raffed houses and totally destroy the look and feel of the neighborhood, but what I do think he's, there's going to be difference from the two different types of products that he could do.
Right.
With a development that can concentrate some density, leave a lot of open space, some of the wildlife, some of the larger features that we heard last time. We went to the community, we tried to address some of the concerns with privacy and height and those issues.
Tim, Truitt Cathy, Chick-fil-A founder, said, "Without profit, there is no impact." So we have to make a profit to continue the impact that we are going to have, because Syndicate, if you ask around, we have a massive impact on the town of Smyrna and the things that we support, and we're going to continue to do that. But that requires us to continue, reality is to make a profit. So we can't go in here and make a, do a house that is not going to be profitable for us.
Well, I'm trying to figure out how you make a profit if you put a, if you, if this is ultimately, we say, Caleb, it's, it's got to be R3 or nothing, and you go, great, I'm going to put a vinyl home on there. I don't see how you're going to pull the money out of that to make, versus putting a, a home with higher-end finishes and whatnot, where you could ask more for it.
And I agree with you, is that I'm not, we're talking about, I'm not at all, like, like Andrew said, I'm not at all coming at you guys as a, as a threat in saying, if we don't get this, I'm going to just say boo hoo and throw up nasty crappy homes. Because as Mark alluded to, and as you did too, that's not who I am. The product that I put my name on is still going to be a good, safe product to be built in there, but the, that's just the reality, is that it is not going to be as high-end of a quality of a product as would, we would be bringing, if we were bringing in with this PRD.
But will it fit what's around it?
Well, there are homes around it that are all vinyl siding.
Will it fit what's around it?
Yes.
There's my question.
Well, property, but that's where.
I don't, I don't think anybody that I.
But will we be pillaging the land?
I don't think anybody that I've heard from or talked to is concerned that you want to build something higher up to try potentially to increase their property values. They, they just want something that fits their property value, right? They want something similar to their property value. And then let it be, because, you know, we know the market, look at it today, look at it eight months ago, the market has moved tremendously.
Sure.
Right? So it ebbs and flows.
Sure.
And, and we don't know that if somebody were to build a 900 or a million-dollar home up on that hill there, that they would ever sell it. Therefore, it's not a comp anyway. You know, if it's not sold, it don't comp their properties. So that, that's.
It does if I build it and sell it to them.
Well, at first, but if they don't move for three years, you know, that's, that comp's gone, right? So I'm, that's just, I'm just trying to explain to you, I think we agree on 90% of it, but I'm trying to be sensitive to the people that I've heard from, and the people that I know that live in that area, to say, if they don't want something that's that nice there, and they'd rather have something parallel to what they live in, it makes sense to me to let them have that, you know? Now, if that's what they, people want, then by all means, we should probably try to help that, because of where it's at. If, like I said, if this were somewhere else, out, away, from a developed subdivision, with this right up in the middle of it, I'd have a whole, whole different mindset about this. But in this case, I just have to feel like, these people know what they want. They've lived there a long, long time, and we need to try to help them out.
Sure. The last thing, unless anybody else has any question, I just would invite y'all to remember that there are, I've talked to numerous people that have swapped to be on PRD, and they're not going to show up tonight, because it's out of their mind. They're okay with it. Numerous people that are surrounding this area, that surrounding, bordering this development, that are okay with it. If they're not okay with it, of course, they're going to come here and talk.
Caleb, you're speaking to the choir brother, because we hear the pros and cons all the time.
Yeah.
We hear it from both sides, don't we? I mean, there's always for it and against it. We just have to make a decision without the noise, if you will. We have to make a decision that's based on the right thing to do.
Sure.
In where it is. And that's kind of where I'm at, so.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. The last time we were here, I suspended the rules, and I allowed someone to, from the neighborhood, to speak and express their opinion on it. So with that, what I'm going to allow tonight, if there's one person that would like to speak for the group that is opposing this, you guys can send someone up, and we'll allow about three minutes, let you give your thoughts on it. And then, you know, if there's someone here that, that does support this, I'm going to do the same thing. So if you come up and give us your name and address, please.
John Turner, 610 Excalibur Court, here in Smyrna. Whenever we had the neighborhood meeting. Whenever we had the neighborhood meeting, we, we actually had a meeting the night before we met with Mr. Spearing. And thank you very much for, for meeting with us, first time I got a chance to meet him. Whenever we left our initial meeting, everybody was against this. He is correct. After we met with him at the Red Bicycle, there were some people that kinda switched sides. Cause the known factor of that, you know? It's mainly, though, people that don't back up to this. It's mainly people that are two streets over, three streets over, something like that. I actually back up to the green space. The, the PRD is great for me. But I, as Mr. Atkins pointed out, I don't think it's great for the neighborhood. Because my neighbors, it's not great for them. I've got some friends here that will back right up to the, the townhomes. I mean, I'm glad he lowered them to, to two levels. But what I, I think we had some people go in, maybe not with open minds, but a lot of the community went in with open minds. And they thought, ah, let's look, let's see, let's see if we can work with this. But ultimately, I would say that probably 80, 85% of the neighborhood is against the PRD. Now, we know that that leads to the unknown. But as was pointed out tonight, it does, it should fit in with the rest of the neighborhood. And that is the biggest concern. I mean, personally, I would love if he can do the PRD and put all single family down there and none up there. But I know that doesn't work for him financially. And nobody's against him making a profit. The other thing that we heard a lot from, from the neighbors is in 2018, this was R1. And y'all rezoned it to R3 at that time because it fit in. Whenever Mr. Tolleson bought it in March, it was R3. Whenever Caleb joined in in July, it was R3. So whenever they bought it, they knew what they were getting into. And that's really what I've heard a lot from the neighbors is, you know, so we do appreciate him trying to work and, and, and make it work with the neighborhood. We are sensitive to him wanting to make money, but, you know, he had the opportunity on the front end to figure out what money he can make or couldn't make. So that's, I think that's what I've heard from, from most of the neighbors. Is that correct? And I've heard from both sides as well, just like he has. So anyway, any, any questions or anything?
No, I think you're, not for me, anybody else?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now if there's anyone here from the neighborhood that supports this project, if you want to have someone come forward and speak about it, I'm, I'm happy to entertain that for three minutes.
They're either shy or they don't.
Okay, so we'll close that. And I will tell you that I received an email today from someone, and I'm not gonna identify him, in the subdivision. And they supported it. And, and it was, as you mentioned, it was because of knowing what they were getting and the fear of what do we not get if we don't, if we agree or if we don't agree and this becomes an R3, or stays an R3 actually. And the rezoning's not granted. So I, I think that's been expressed.
Tim, if I may, does that kinda know where I feel about it going forward now? I've really pondered this back and forth a lot. And the reason I wanna give Mr. Spearing a lot of credit, yes, he has invested a lot of money into our town. He does a dynamic product. And going forward, I hope that he continues to wanna do that and that we can continue to support that, the things he does. This location for the PRD is where I struggle. Otherwise, I would be proud to have Mr. Spearing put a single family home development anywhere around my house. He does quality product, and it's a beautiful product. I just wanna say that moving forward.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and take the opportunity to express this. When we look at a comprehensive plan and we've built the, the plan out and we talk about how we're gonna do it, we talk about moving from a roadway and usually what happens, especially if it's an arterial or a major road, we talk about higher density to a medium density to a lower density. And with this, we're not consistent with our comprehensive plan, number one. Secondly, we are, this is just not in keeping and is not inconsistent with this neighborhood. If this project were anywhere else and it was on a strip of land where there were something similar, I would support it 100%. So I, you know, I do want folks to know that I am not opposed to townhomes. And I'm not opposed to this project. And I think it'd be a great project most anywhere else. But as long, the project itself would have to meet the guidelines and the parameters for me to support it that are in our comprehensive plan. And it's just not consistent with it, it's not consistent with the neighborhood. Any other discussion? If not, then we'll entertain a motion.
I'm gonna step out and make the motion to deny based on the surrounding R3 product. This just doesn't fit the zoning in my opinion, so.
Okay, I have one motion, I have a motion to deny. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to deny. Any further discussion? All those in favor of denying this request signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is denied. Now, I know we got a lot of folks here from the subdivision and the surrounding neighborhood. Y'all wanna take a moment and leave, you can. If you'd like to stay, we'd love to have you for the entire meeting. Thank you. Okay, we are on to new business. Our first item is a rezoning request, Jeremy Byrd, 102 Wright Street, rezoning R2 to C1.
Yeah, this is a rezoning request for parcel land on, on Wright Street. It's about four tenths of an acre. It has frontage on Wright Street, also has, there's an alleyway kinda in between this property and the, the buildings that are all along Front Street there as well. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R2 and C1. This area, the land use plan in this area is our depot district character area. It kinda supports a, kinda a mix of uses and services, a little more urban in lot sizes and setbacks and various kinda commercial and attached residential multifamily are, are appropriate for that area. There's no effect on any street on our thoroughfare plan with this request. Adequate fire flow is not attainable at this time. It's about 850 gallons per minute at 30 PSI. So development of this property isn't possible until that fire flow issue is resolved. The town does, is several areas of town that we are kinda working through with some corrections and upgrades in our water system to correct those issues. And, and this area is in, or this parcel does lie within an area that is planned for some improvements. There's, so that is coming, but it will be a little bit of time before that is completed. So the zoning of this tract, really, either residential or commercial, really, it's gotta wait on that issue to be corrected before they could develop it. So certainly the rezoning of this property wouldn't, it probably wouldn't see any development for a little bit. But the zoning, I think, would be consistent with that, that area with kinda that mix of commercial and, and some residential there. So, there's all I've got?
Okay. Any questions for Kevin?
Not a question, it's a, it's a no brainer to continue to improve that downtown district the way, especially the way this proprietor has. He's invested a lot of time and money down there, he's got looking goods.
Other discussion?
So if we rezone it, there's nothing can be done to it until the water.
Until that fire flow gets corrected, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. But.
Because I know we looked at another parcel a while back, it was the same way the fire flow was low in that, within that same block, really.
Right.
So, okay. The current structure that's on it, is that a, is that that metal building?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That structure will be removed.
Other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with staff comments.
No, a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's approved. Our next item is Sandra Elias, 104 Hazelwood Drive, rezoning R1 with H1 to C4 with H1.
This is a tract of lands at 104 Hazelwood Drive, it's about three two hundredths of an acre. Currently zoned R1. There is a house on the property currently. Proposed zoning would be C4. The land use plan, again, similar to the previous request, it is the depot district area. It's fairly close to the previous property we just talked about. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1, C2, and C4. Hazelwood Drive is a ma, a minor arterial on a major thoroughfare plan. So any development of this property would require dedication of any adequate right of way if it is needed. The, like a similar situation to the previous request, adequate fire flow is not attainable at this time. So any development of this property as, into some sort of commercial use would have to wait until that fire flow issue is resolved. Again, the town is working through those projects right now and it will be corrected at some point in the future. Just not, maybe a little bit of time. So the existing house, existing, certainly that can continue to, to be there, obviously, and be lived in. But it could not be used for any type of commercial use till that fire flow issue is resolved. So. That's all that I've got.
Kevin, to staff view, this is something that's consistent with what's happening in, in that area and has already occurred.
Yeah, the property, just directly adjacent to it, to the, kinda the north, north and west, it also has a house on it, but it has, it was zoned C4 some time ago. And of course, across the street is C1. And it is within the historic overlay. That wouldn't change with this rezoning.
So if anything were done there, it would be.
Have to be reviewed by Historic Zoning Commission.
Exactly, and be kept in with what's already there, or what the standards are, I should say.
Right.
Yeah.
Tim, I got a little curious about this one because it's, it's the border between, it's all growing that way. If you get on the other end of Hazelwood down there where Eden Springs comes across, it's starting to crawl from there as well. So I picked up the phone, I called the applicant, I just wanted to kinda see what their use intent was. And I think it's a salon type of business.
Okay.
And we talked about it a little bit. And I actually called one or two of the neighbors over there as well, just to get their input, and they felt like they could support it, so.
Okay.
If it's zoned C4, Kevin, can they still use it as a residential as it is today?
It would be, it would become a grandfather.
But they wouldn't be able to put the salon in today because of fire flow.
Right.
That would have to wait.
They'd have to wait.
And we, we have a street with no name here.
Yes, that's true.
It's an alleyway. It has a song.
Is that a song?
It's a horse.
A horse with no name, yes.
Is there a plan for that?
No, it's, there's nothing. There's no plans for that at all. I don't even know. It's a, I think it's more or less a gravel driveway is really what it is. But it does show up. Yeah, it's a one lane gravel driveway.
Okay. All right, any other questions for staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments from Andrew. Do I have a second? Second from Amy. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One opposed. Okay, this motion is approved. Our next item is Sean Saunders, 7085 Florence Road. It's a PID amendment.
Yeah, this is a, seventy, yeah, 7085 Florence Road. It's about 3.23 acres of property. It's already has been approved and has a planned industrial development. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1 and R3 and then I2 across the street. And the land use plan would support medium density, single family in this area. Florence Road is a minor arterial and a plot has been submitted to dedicate adequate right of way for that. The approved PID is for six separate mini storage buildings totaling 49,410 square feet. Buildings are required to be constructed with brick, stone, or concrete siding on the ends of the buildings facing Florence Road and the perimeter walls of the three buildings which border the residential properties to the side and rear. Sides in here, both sides. The elevation submitted for the site plan approval showed brick or stone on the ends of the buildings facing Florence Road with metal on three perimeter walls. The planning commission did require those to be built with masonry as a, as a part of the site plan approval. Did not specify a specific product. The requested amendment is to remove the requirement that the rear elevations of the three buildings which border the adjacent residential properties be constructed with a brick, stone, or concrete siding and instead be allowed to be constructed with metal. So that's really the only change. The, it's against those three, there's three buildings that border those, there's three interior buildings and then there's the three exterior buildings. And those, basically the rear of those buildings is required per the PID approval to have that, the, the brick, stone, or concrete siding. So that is, that would be the only amendment would be to, to be allowed to use metal.
Did Steph obtain a reason for this change? A request?
Just, I think it was a little bit about cost as well as, there are some. There have been some buildings along Florence Road that were approved utilizing metal, I think, was, was also brought up. But that was.
Years ago?
Basically that the. The PUD was approved in 2020. And then the site plan got approved. It got extended once and then expired and had to come back just last month. They have graded the sites, they're getting ready to get permits, wanted to get permits for the buildings, but.
Is Steph in favor of this change?
Because it's residential on all three sides, I would feel better keeping it consistent with what was approved with the PID originally. That would be my recommendation.
Kevin, the buildings that he included in the pictures that are currently metal, do you know anything about those, like when they were built? Does, do they back up to residential?
The first one is actually on, it's kinda at the corner of Florence and Wade Harris. And that one's been there for some time. The other two are actually part of, it's Steel Technologies is the building that that is.
I think the Steel Technologies, isn't it industrial zoned already?
Yeah.
It's on the Nissan side.
Yeah, it's on the Nissan side, yes. Similar zoning to this, this was a, you had the, the property across the street was developed already when it was annexed and was given that industrial zoning. And of course, this is an expansion, it's the same business, it's an expansion across the street to build some additional storage. Of course, it was rezoned then. Approaching three years ago now.
West Fork developed after, I mean, the storage facility was already in place and then West, West Fork developed around it, correct?
Well, I don't know if the storage.
Tangent.
Tangent was there.
Yeah, there you go.
I don't know that, I don't know if the storage buildings came later, tangent was certainly there when West Fork was built, yes.
West Fork developed around tangent.
Yeah, it did.
But when you're looking at, was it Minehead and Streets on the opposite side where we're looking at, that was already developed residential.
There was a house on this property.
Yeah, okay.
The way they're gonna set, I've gone by there and looked at it, they're gonna be very visible. Especially if you're in that neighborhood on Minehead. Every neighbor backing up to that's gonna see it because of the height of the topography there, the way they've got it set up right now to build on. It's gonna be very visible from the neighborhood. And the homes behind it are all brick with minimal siding, you know, on them.
What, what type of trees would be required?
There would be, a, a buffer is required. Actually, the most. There would be, a buffer is required, actually, the most extensive buffer we require is the berm, as well as the trees on top is required because it is industrial backing up the residential.
But visibility would still be an issue.
It's still, could certainly be an issue, yeah, because it's...
Well, it's one of the things we talked about when we approved it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is the very back building that backs up to the homes, it's for, like, motorhomes thing like that, it's gonna be very tall anyway.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's meant to be like a boat and RV storage, yes. Really, all, I think all three of the exterior buildings are that. So, it'd just be kind of a back wall.
Mike, were you talking, you're talking about viewing it from Minehead, right? Is that where you drove by?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and the grading of, you know, there's a six-foot fence, one of the neighbors has a wooden six-foot fence, and it's up on it a foot or so, and then, of course, you build on top of that, you're well above that six-foot fence.
Okay.
So, whether you have an RV back there, or even buffer, you're gonna see it, because it's, this time of year, you're definitely gonna see it.
Okay.
So...
Other discussions? Questions? I will entertain a motion then. Motion to deny the request? I have a motion to deny the request from Tim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mike. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of denying this request signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is denied. Our next item is Clay Wallace, Fortitude Trail, east of Montgomery Road, rezoning R1 to PRD to PRD.
Yeah, this is a request for rezoning, it was, it's a similar request to what you all saw a few months ago. It's about 23.13 acres, there are 70 lots proposed, all single-family. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1, R3, and PRD, which are the Woodmont PRD and the Colony Green Tree PRD, which is not developed. The land use plan will support medium-density, single-family residential development in this area, so it certainly is consistent with our land use plan. And there are no roads here really affected by the thoroughfare plan by this request. As I said, this is a 70 lot, 70 single-family lots are proposed in this PRD. We had a few comments. The primary informational type comments, the first two, the water lines, we do have some concerns about fire flow here, but we feel like if they connect to the water line at Texas Skinner Drive, that should be able to meet the fire flow requirements, which is 1,000 gallons per minute at 20 PSI. The layout does propose a connection to a street at Woodmont, which has been approved as a cul-de-sac. And so, we did, as the town staff did, reach out to that current developer regarding a revision to that Woodmont plant to allow for that connection to happen. Planning commission probably will remember, part of the reason this was turned down before is because there was no connection, other than the one connection to Fortitude Trail, which is the only street that's stubbed into it currently. And then, so, we've recommended, maybe if we can make the connection where they're showing the potential connection, and the street that's, the north-south street that's west of that cul-de-sac that, it kind of is an alternative. Because the Colony Estates PUD that was approved precludes any connection being made to that street anyway. So, it made sense to us to kind of flip the two and then allow for the connection here. That street is not built yet, that plat was approved, there's been no construction plan submitted or anything yet for that section, so there's, nothing's there yet. It was approved back in August, I think. So... Again, it's not there yet, there's no, we would probably, if the planning commission and council ultimately rezone the property the way they are proposing it, when that final plat comes in, we would probably recommend that that connection be made at that time with, from Woodmont, and then do with the other phase, have the cul-de-sac on the other phase.
Kevin, I might have missed it, did you say the Woodmont developer was in agreement to do that?
We reached out to them, we, yeah, I actually talked to their engineering representation. I know they have reached out to them, but they never responded. They did ask them to create kind of what it would look like for them, and give, so he did that, and they never came back with an answer one way or the other.
How long has that been?
I reached out to him as late as today, and so...
We've been on a little break, so...
Yeah.
Maybe people are getting back to work.
Right.
So, if we approve this, and the developer in Woodmont says, "I'm not gonna do that connection," then they still got one in and one out?
They would, I would...
You can make it subject, too.
I would recommend also that, that could be a subject, too, or if it's approved the way they've got it shown, I would, probably when that plat comes in, for final plat, I would probably be recommending the planning commission to approve it with that connection being made, so. I don't know that, my understanding from, again, is from their engineer, there wasn't a strong, "No way, we don't want to do that," it was, "We'll take a look at it" kind of thing, so...
Is that not an open space? It looks like we have one lot there, and I'm talking about when you're looking at Woodmont, on the, looking north there on the left-hand side, that looks like a lot...
It is an open space.
And next to it, looks like there's an open space there.
There is an open space. And that's why it made sense to us, if, I think, that may be a detention area, I can't remember 100% for sure with that plat. If you eliminate the cul-de-sac and just extend the street another, probably 60, 80 feet to make that connection, it made sense to us, and then you could still create the cul-de-sac on the other lot and potentially, you know, I don't think they would lose a lot, if you did, you could probably add it back on the other side and not be an issue. And it's not gonna be a real change in construction costs, because you're still building one cul-de-sac and one stubbed street, so...
But we don't know what the size of those two end lots are on that cul-de-sac. If they put a street in, couldn't it shorten them to where they couldn't build on two lots? At the end of the Woodmont cul-de-sac?
I don't think so.
I think there's...
I think it'll make, if anything, it'll make the lots a little bigger.
Yeah, because the cul-de-sac goes away, you know, you don't have that radius.
It's just straight streets to have 100-foot diameter cul-de-sacs, it probably would, the lots would probably be a little bigger. Overall, like I said, the development is certainly consistent with our land use plan. It's very similar with, to what you looked at before as far as the type of homes and all of that, certainly meeting our requirements for all the setbacks and parking and amenities and all those things, so...
And when we see a subdivision develop, typically, you don't see the backside of one develop first. I mean, my experience is that you see the area, you know, usually the phase one or two, or whatever, is closer to the roadway, would that not be correct?
Yeah, yeah, they don't start at the back, they start at the front, work their way back.
They do the roads as they go.
Yeah, exactly. And so, and that's what happened, you have Woodmont, you know, has done that, Green Tree, which is, would tie into, certainly, there's been multiple phases of that development. And they started at Rock Springs Road and have worked their way south, so... So, yeah, certainly, that's typical.
I like the idea of trying to make the connection that you proposed there, and I think that would enhance both Woodmont as well as this development.
Other questions or thoughts?
I guess I'm uncomfortable since we haven't heard from the Woodmont developer yet.
I think, I think ultimately the planning commission kind of has the authority when the plat comes in to require a connection if they need to. So, I don't think that would, I understand what you're saying, and I wanted to reach out to them as well, just because I wanted to, I wanted them to be in the loop and to hold the discussion, certainly. But I think ultimately, the planning commission kind of requires streets to be stubbed places that we want them to, we've done that other places, certainly, so I think we can do that, so...
Okay.
Anything else for staff?
I don't have any.
I'll entertain a motion then.
Move to approve with staff comment.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments from Andrew. Do I have a second?
A second, providing that the street stub is in the staff comments, as we've discussed. Yeah.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's approved. We are now on to preliminary plats, our first item is Marlo Smyrna, Genie Lane, Motlow College Boulevard owner, developer, Gray Star Development East LLC.
Yeah, this is the plat, you also have a site plan later on, on your agenda for this property. This is the subdivision plat. It creates two lots, it also creates a street which would connect Genie Lane westward and to tie into the vintage development, which is kind of behind this property, and tie into the road that was shown as a part of that development to create this stub across. We had a few comments, the first two comments would remain, those are standard comments. Number three, just kind of puts in writing, again, Genie Lane and Motlow College Boulevard are collectors on the thoroughfare plan, and adequate right-of-way does exist for those streets. The new collector road, which would connect Genie Lane to the vintage development west, is shown as is required by the planning, by the thoroughfare plan, and on the vintage plans, inadequate right-of-way shown there for that. They do still need to name that road, and provide a 911 approval for that name, so we need to keep comment four. We had a couple other comments, which have been corrected regarding a minimum setback along Motlow College Boulevard, that's been fixed. The contours haven't shown it and labeled, and then they took out most of the buildings, they had all the, it was almost a, this whole site plan, as well as was shown on the drawing with all the contours and all, it was, it made it very difficult to understand the plat, so they did remove the majority of that, so we can remove comments five, six, and seven, and with those remaining comments, staff would recommend approval.
Okay. Questions for Kevin? Hearing no questions, we're ready for a vote.
Move to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's approved. We are now ready to move forward with site plans. Our first site plan is Blakeney Common Town Homes, 8706 Rocky Fork Road, Rocky Fork Hamilton Road, owner, developer, Collins Corner Ventures LLC, Land Solutions Company LLC. Mitch, I'm gonna look up first before I call on Kevin, so I got you right tonight. Go ahead.
This is Blakeney Commons, it is a PUD development which does consist of both commercial and townhomes. This part, the site plan, is consisting of just the townhomes portion of this development, located at the north of the intersection at Rock Fork Hamiltonville and Morton Lane. The site plan is for the townhome development, which does consist of 80 units. Access to the site would have one access point off of Morton Lane with a second access point off of Rock Fork Hamiltonville Road. That access point off of Rock Fork Hamiltonville Road would also serve as the primary entrance to the commercial development at a future date. Vehicle or use area for the site? We have some modification in the numbers. There was discrepancy on the plans, one plan showed one number, another plan showed different numbers, so we had some clarification for the plans that were received this week. Vehicle or use area on the site is 1.46 acres, which does equate to 6,389 square feet of landscaping required, and they're showing for 10,355 square feet. Total parking required of two spaces per unit, and they're showing for 187. Thirty-two extra garage spaces are shown as well. The end units on each of these sections would have a single-car garage as part of it. Handicap parking, not required, being in townhome development, but they are showing for four spaces, which are shown nearby the community areas. Landscape plan shows a variety of trees planted within landscape bounds along drive aisles. Shrubbery is also proposed within landscape bounds around the parking areas, and then street scape along Morton Lane is shown as well. The architectural elevations have been revised since we last saw the plans and since we received them this week, so there were some modifications that had been done to them. The elevation submitted showed the buildings to be built with a primary material of brick and fiber cement board. The fronts, side, and first floor on the end units are all brick. Previous middle did show a mix of hardy board and brick, now we have entirely brick on the front sides, and then, like I said, that first story on the end units for the rear. The remaining elevations on the rear of the buildings are consisting entirely of the hardy board. Staff does, feels though this is consistent with the PUD approval for this project. The reason for the end units not having entirely brick is due to the design of the buildings, the way they're shown, the top floor is cantilevered a little bit off the bottom floor, so doing brick on there would be a little bit of a design difficulty. So, to overcome that, they are showing for hardy board rather than brick on those end units for the top and bottom units. So, staff has been in conversation with the applicant on this, and we feel like this is a good middle ground and meets, staff, what we feel is a good product for the design of it. Couple standard comments for this, all to remain, and then we have staff comments. Majority of these has been addressed with the plans we have received this week. Comment one was regarding the road name, and I want approval, we have received that and can be removed. Comment two is a utilities comment, and we will leave utilities to address that comment whether it has been addressed to their satisfaction or not. So, comment two remain. Comment three is from the fire department for the auto turn, that has been addressed and can be removed. Comment four, they were showing gates at the entrances to the townhome portion of the development. The applicant has clarified, these are more of a decorative piece than actual functional gates, so we just want to make sure if they were a gate for operational purposes and meets all the fire department requirements for opening and closing, but being it is not, it can be removed. Comment five, there is a CUD easement along Morton Lane, and they are showing the landscaping within that easement, and they have pushed it back outside of the CUD easement, so that comment has been addressed and can be removed. Comment six, goes back to the comment mentioned earlier about the discrepancy between numbers shown on different pages, and that has been addressed and can be removed. Comment seven was regarding those elevations and just detailed outlined previously, so that has been addressed to staff satisfaction, so comment number seven can be removed as well. Comments eight and nine are both CUD comments, being this is within their service boundaries, so those two comments will remain. With that, comments two, eight and nine are the only ones that remain. Everything else can be removed under the staff comment section, and with that, staff would recommend approval.
Okay, questions for Mitchell?
Kevin, how long's it been since we approved all this? It's been a while, hasn't it?
It's been a little while, and they, this site plan was actually submitted a couple months ago, and they withdrew it for some issues, and so they came back, it's fine, so... I can't remember exactly how long, but it has been a little while since we approved it.
Seems like it. The corner of Rocky Fork Hamilton and Morton, that's been also approved for development, correct?
The zoning has been approved, we haven't seen the site plans yet.
Okay. Other questions? Other questions? Comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. Our next item under site plans is grand wash. Amleville Road, General Forest Court, owner, developer, Grand Solkey Properties LLC, CWP Car Wash Pro Designers.
Yeah, this is a site plan for a car wash located at the corner of General Forest Court and Amleville Road. Applicant has received approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals back in October of 2022 for the special exception use of a car wash on a C2 zone property. The property does abut a residentially zoned properties to the west, so that will require some extra landscaping to be installed over there to, between the residential and the commercial style developments. Across the street, Amleville Road that is, there is the public shopping center. Vehicle use area for the site is .73 acres and that requires landscaping of 3,215 square feet and they're showing for 17,225 square feet. Total park required of eleven spaces. They are showing for seventeen out here and then you have twelve additional spaces dedicated directly for vacuum on the site. Handicap parking required of one space and they are showing for two. The, this is in our plan we've received recent revisions on and quite a bit has been updated on it since the comments have were sent out. The landscape plan shows streetscaping along General Forest Court and Amleville Road. Additional landscaping is shown along the northern and western property lines with shrubbery and trees and landscape bounds throughout the site. As part of the additions and modifications that have been since we recently received these plans, the western property line did receive an upgrade of landscaping. Last plan showed a couple trees, a couple shrubs shown in between some of the existing vegetation that will remain out there and they showed some increased landscaping that more tightly aligned with the type C landscape buffer. There are some mature trees that are out there on the site as well that are proposed to be remained, so scattering this buffer between those existing trees is what is proposed. And they're also showing for a foot privacy fence to be installed along that border as well to kind of create an initial buffer between the business and those residential zone properties. Architecture elevations, this is another thing that's was changed, upgraded since the last time the comments went out. The elevations on the revised plans show a primary material of brick, stone, glass, and glazing on all four of the elevations. Secondary materials of EPHES and fiber cement boards and then there's some accent material of aluminum as well. The north elevation which would face the building to the industrial or commercial building to the north of this property, that is shown to be 71.88% of primary materials which is shy of the 75% requirement per designer review. The other three elevations do meet designer review standards. Couple standard comments, all which would remain and then staff comments to go through. Staff comment one was regarding the auto turn with the fire department and that has been addressed and can be removed. Comment two is regarding the FTC and the backflow locations and that has been addressed as well and can be removed. Comment three and four are both utility comments and we'll leave that to utilities to review and make sure that meets their requirements. Comment six was regarding the construction entrance details. That has been addressed and can be removed. Comment six was regarding the drive aisle width and there was a little bit of discrepancy in the way staff was interpreting the plans and the way that they have designed it, but that has been addressed and can be removed. Comment seven is regarding the architectural elevations. The applicant had a older model of the designer review that was still on the website and that was the reason for it not meeting designer review previously. They are now primarily in accordance with the designer review standards at this time. So the north elevation which is just less than four percent, less than what is required with that 75% threshold, that's the only elevation that staff has a problem still with, so minor revision needed to make to that elevation, but other than that, all three of the other elevations do meet designer review. Comment eight was regarding the landscape buffer and that has been addressed. And then comment nine, we did ask them to see if they could shift the drive aisle along General Forest, that entrance more closely aligned with the drive aisle across General Forest Court to the other businesses. The applicant did say that doing so, shifting it would cause more of a disruption with the traffic flow and patterns around the site. Thus, they would like to leave it as is and staff sees it fine as is due to the traffic that would be produced down General Forest and this business itself. So if they could do it, great. If not, staff is okay with it as well and is going to remain as is. So with that, staff would recommend approval with the remaining comments which are three, four, and seven revised to just be the north elevation bringing up designer review.
Mitchell, has this been heard at BZA?
Yes, back in October last year.
Okay, and so this use was allowed at that time?
Correct.
What is a required zone for a?
A watch area like this instead of C2?
C5?
C5.
It's by ride in C5. It's by a BZA, it's by a BZA review in C2 just for this specific automotive service use is the only one.
If it was C5, they could put a car lot in.
Yes, but it's not C5.
Okay.
We're good with stacking?
Yes, plain, yeah. They have it three wide, so it allows for plain stacking.
You know, I'll say that just from knowledge wise, might to kind of address what you're thinking, most of these facilities now, the main tunnel wash is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 2.1 to about 3.4 million. So it would be very expensive for someone, you know, let's just say it were a C5 and someone wanted to come in and do a car lot, be very expensive and I just can't see somebody letting go of it to do that just because of the investment that's involved in something like this.
Well, that and it's C2, it'll stay C2.
It'll stay too, yeah.
If they got this approved, they decided not to do it and they got some C5, then they could put a car lot in.
Exactly. It's still being expensive.
C5, our ears go up.
Yeah.
Let's say they got it, got it C5 and they were gonna put this on it and then it changed the answer. They didn't do it, they were able to put the car lot in.
Yeah, so we're protected.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it is unusual to see a car wash in a backing up to residential area, is it not?
We've, we had one previously approved, I don't know if it was last year or two years ago now, that's over on Potomac Place. There's some townhome, higher density development nearby as well.
And you know, I would say of course across the street you have a, the Publix development there and then along General Forest, you've got a big mix of commercial all along into that neighborhood. So I tend to agree with you if it were, I mean, let's pick a neighborhood. In my, I'll pick my neighborhood if I saw one going in right there, yeah, but given the roadway itself and the surrounding zoning, I don't see it that far out of line, but that's a great point.
And we did at the BZA meeting, there were neighbors there and we, they had a pretty good discussion about the buffer and the fence. There's an eight foot fence going in partially because of some of that discussion with the neighbors and things like that too.
There was further discussion about the noise as well being already extra residential and that's something that was discussed thoroughly at the BZA meeting as well. The applicant was able to explain their process and the way they do it and how it's a fairly constricted noise to the actual building itself.
You can feel sure if councilman Sullivan was heading up that BZA conversation, he asked, probably asked some good questions, so he's very thorough.
Yes.
I do have one concern, Kevin. It's probably a city issue, the street. It is kind of wide there where you turn into the Publix parking lot where the food places are there out front. You can almost get two cars in there going from the parkway up, up Hazelwood into it if you turn left into it. If somebody stops there, that road gets a little, a little tight. And/or you could funnel into that drive because I've almost gotten hit there several times, people wanting to stay in the left when they're in that right hand lane. Do we have any future development to put a dedicated turn into that lot or anything? You understand what I'm talking, see what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I understand what you're talking about. I know there was a traffic study done. Now I'm trying to remember what's, Charles, do you remember exactly?
So that turn lane will be coming off Amleville Road into, so it will be a dedicated left lane there.
So it will be a left into the site, there will be a turn.
And it will match up with Publix exit and entrance there. It will match up with that.
Okay, in front where the restaurants are?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Then that answers my question because yeah, that's a, that's, that's a bad spot. Okay.
Okay.
Is there a requirement? I know there's a fence. Is there a requirement about keeping up that fence? And I say that because I see a lot in town that don't last a lot, a lot of the time.
They would be required. It'll be part of the, the car wash's property and so it'll be something that they're, just as any other structure, their property itself, their landscaping, their grass, all that'll have to be maintained. So certainly if it doesn't happen, then that's an enforcement issue that the codes department has to take up, but yes, yeah, it would be required to do that.
Okay. Other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's approved. Our last item under site plans is Marlo Smyrna, Genie Lane, owner, developer, Gray Star Development East LLC.
This is a site plan of Marlo Smyrna proposing 639 units, apartment units, on 46.16 acres and this is located north of Genie Lane and south of Motlow College Boulevard. Site would have a new proposed public road dividing the development half extending from Genie Lane and connecting to the vintage multifamily residential development to the west. The southern half of this development would have an access point off of Genie Lane as well as the future public roadway that would divide these two tracks. The northern half of the development would have two access points off of close public roadway and there are three vacant tracks remain to the north of this development within the town of Smyrna and there are zone R4 and R6. Vehicle or use area on the site is 10.44 acres and that would require 1.04 acres of landscaping and they're showing for 1.59 acres. Total parking required of 1,278 spaces which is two per unit and they are showing for 1,282 spaces. Handicap parking requirement is 26 spaces and they are showing for 33 and those are spread throughout the site accordingly. The landscape plan shows a type C landscape buffer along the property line abutting the commercially zoned property within Point Commercial subdivision and then to the southwest and along the property line to the north abutting the R4 zone property. Mix of trees and shrubbery are shown along Genie Lane and the future public roadway dividing the site. Additional trees and shrubbery are shown within landscape islands throughout the development and in the parking lot areas. Architecture elevations show all apartment buildings to have differently designed fiber cement board to create architectural variations with the first floor clad entirely brick veneer. Previous plans, we have received updated elevations since packets went out. Previously, not the entire floor was brick. We have, staff has asked them to show the entire first floor to minimum in brick and they have done so. So the elevations have been updated. The entire first floor is entirely brick. The clubhouse shows a mixture of fiber cement board and brick. As presented, these elevations now do meet the designer view. Our staff has requested that minimum first floor to be clad in brick and they have done so. Standard comments, one through six, all to remain. Many of these are very similar to what we reviewed when the plat came through, a couple comments, a couple items ago. Comment, staff comments. Number one is regarding the plat that you previously saw earlier tonight. Comment two is regarding the retaining wall details. The applicant did note that they, they will provide that at a later review stage, whether it be during grading or during the building's review. Comment three was regarding the plans for the amenities and they have provided more detail on those and that can be removed. Comment four is regarding the designer view and that first floor being entirely brick and they have done so, so comment four can be removed. Comment three and four are the only ones that can be removed and everything else will remain. And with that, staff would recommend approval with those comments.
To reiterate, this is already zoned R6, which is, and these apartments are appropriate for an R6 zoning, so we haven't done any rezoning or anything along those, those lines. This is what is allowed here and this is what they're proposing.
It's been for quite some time.
It's been like that a long time. It's been zoned that way a long time.
Well, I feel like we were fortunate in some ways in that we've had some commercial development.
And some oversight.
Yeah.
I know the public sometimes hollers at us about this, but this is zoned appropriately. There are very few sites like this left, I think. Am I correct? Two, three more in ten pounds.
There's not many vacant tracks left. This is one of the last. This is the last one of any real size at all.
Any questions for Mitchell then?
Mitchell, there's three connecting roads here, one on the front and then one on each of the sides to get out of that complex.
Yeah.
Okay, not, not having anything in the back, running out the back, connecting to the main road?
So you're gonna have the back of the site, that's the vintage multifamily development. When that develops back, we'll have that roadway dividing the two basically north and south part of the developments. It's all gonna connect together until that happens. It's similar to the rezoning plus looked at earlier with the development and the connections.
Okay. Other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve. Staff comments from Tim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Further discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's approved. We are now on to our January bond review report.
Yeah, we've got a few tonight. First one is Woodmont, Phase 6A. They are actually really at the end of their maintenance period. We really only need one thing fixed and then they're as built. They, I've talked with them. I did have heard from them since this report went out. Those will be, they expect to have everything completed before, sort of the as built before January 22nd. The pedestrian signs, they said it may be a little bit longer, but I would be okay with keeping this. If they don't get it done by the 22nd, just for like a one month extension because they're, they're ready to finish that up. So I expect it to be done either by the 22nd or very soon after on that one. So we should be able to release that one. Point subdivision, this is one we've only had for a year. This is for Phase 1 of that. Nothing has been built there yet other than the infrastructure. We still, do still have some, some things certainly to finish there with the roads and different things. So we would recommend a one year extension on that one. Cedar Hills, Section 3, Phase 1, that one, they have, again, it's one we've only had for a year. They do have permits on all the lots. It's only about 24 lots in that section. They did request an extension on that one to allow them time to complete that work and we would, would recommend, again, we've only had it a year, we would be okay with a one year extension on that one. The next one's a little bit different just because it's a cell tower site that was waiting on some roads to be built that have now very recently been built. So we would recommend, this is a cell tower that subdivision is basically developed around it. So, so that road has been completed now, or at least to the point that they could go ahead and extend a much shorter driveway than what they were going to have to do. And so we would recommend an extension of six months on that one to give them time to finish that up. Hunter's Point Annex, Section 3, Phase 1. Hunter's Point Annex, Section Three, Phase One. This is basically everything's, I think this is really the end of the maintenance period, I believe. So if they there's just some cleanup items there and some ASBILs that need to be submitted, we would be okay with a six-month extension on that one to give them time to finish that up and get us the ASBILs. Cedar Hills, Section Two, Phase One, this is the end of their maintenance period. They are, I did talk with them, they are working through trying to finish that up by the end of the year, so I don't know if they were able to finish that up before December thirty-first or not, but they are working through that to finish that up. And so if they're able to finish that up by February tenth, certainly we could release that one as well, otherwise we might need to extend it one more time for six months. And then last one is Sundale, Section One, everything's finished, and we can release that one.
Okay. Any questions for Kevin? Concerning the bond review reports. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the bond review report.
Have a motion to approve the bond review report. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor of approving the January bond review report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The report is approved. Staff comments?
I don't have anything else.
Okay. Counselor? Catherine? Anything from our gallery out here? What's left of it, yeah. Anything from the commission? We stand adjourned.